Ted, ready in the back? Ready in the back. Good evening, everybody. You are at a common council meeting of the city of Wausau. It is 6:05 PM, April 29th, 2025, City Hall 407 Grant Street, Council Chambers. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call roll, please.
We have ten voting members present and one excused.
We have ten voting members present and one excused. A little different.
Okay, first item we have is proclamations. We have a few proclamations tonight. We had a couple of tree plantings over the last week and over the weekend. We had Arbor Day where we planted trees with, with Parks Commission or Parks Department and our partners Marathon Electric, Wisconsin Public Service, and our very own CCIT, City County IT Department. Is Jenna here tonight? Jenna planted some Jenna Elms. We planted some Elms out there, replacing some old ash. And the requirement for Tree City USA is that we do have a proclamation for this. So here we go. Whereas, there has been a long and, there's long been a recognition of the importance of trees in the quality of our environment and our lives. And this year, we celebrate the national 154th anniversary of Arbor Day. And the importance of planting trees has been stressed in terms of protecting our planet's ozone layers by cleaning the air, producing oxygen, reducing erosion of top cell, cutting heating and cooling costs, providing habitat for wildlife, and beautifying our community. And whereas, trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, the Parks Department will honor this important day by planting trees at Oak Island Park with the assistance of local families, Marathon Electric Group, and the Wisconsin Public Service. And whereas, the city of Wausau is proud to be named Tree City USA for the 44th consecutive year, recognizing Wausau's progressive forestry program. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Doug Denny, Mayor of the city of Wausau, do hereby proclaim April 24th as Arbor Day in the city of Wausau and commend the observance for all citizens and urge them to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. A corollary to that one, or an additional one, was Earth Day. We had a couple of Alders, Alder Gisselman and Alder Killian on Saturday went to Westfield Park, or Westview Park, and planted trees there with, with the Earth Day group. Generally, there's a proclamation with that as well, and that goes along with Arbor Day. Also, yesterday, when we had the storms, the workers memorial was, was presented. It got rained out. So normally, this proclamation gets read for the workers memorial. So we're going to enter it into the, into the, into the record. Whereas each year, thousands of workers are killed and millions more are injured or fail, or fall ill in the workplace, often from incidents that are preventable. And whereas, despite advances, the toll of workplace injuries, illness, and deaths remain significant, and many workers still fear retaliation when speaking up about unsafe conditions, facing too many to remain silent and putting themselves and their colleagues at risks. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Doug Denny, Mayor of the city of Wausau, do hereby proclaim Workers Memorial Day, April 28th. And the last one, is the Rotary here? Is that a yes? No? Okay. We're going to enter it into the record, but normally, we like to present if they're here. National Day of Prayer is a time-honored American tradition established in 1952, inviting people of all faiths to come together in prayer, reflection, and unity. And whereas, the theme of the 2025 National Day of Prayer, lift up the world, light up the world, calls on people to come together in shared values of peace, humility, and service to one another. And whereas, the Rotary Club of Wausau plays a valued role in supporting and organizing local observances of the National Day of Prayer, reflecting their commitment to service above self and the betterment of the Wausau community. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Doug Denny, Mayor of the city of Wausau, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 1st, as the National Day of Prayer in the city of Wausau and encourage residents to observe this day in a manner meaningful to them and to the community gatherings, such as those supported by the Rotary Club of Wausau, in a shared spirit of hope, reflection, and service. And their event, the Rotary's holding, I believe, at Mount Olive on May 1st, 6:30 AM. All right, up next is, any more proclamations? That's it. Pre-registered citizens. So I'm going to, we didn't have the piece ready yet for reading, but we will recommend that we don't applaud. We're going to, we're going to try to maintain decorum here. And we, several of us went to the Joint Finance Committee, State of Wisconsin, meeting this morning, listening, or it's a field hearing. And rather than clap, they gave the, what did they call it? The silent clap. So feel free to do that. Do we have a registered? Okay, we have one registered, Carrie Moro.
I'm Carrie Moro, 1025 Everest Boulevard in Wausau. I'm here tonight because it seems like the only mechanism I have to file a formal complaint against our mayor. We expect a certain level of behavior from our leaders. And now he's trying to appoint people to the Ethics Committee to serve his agenda. After the council meeting in March, which I spoke during public comments, he sought me out and berated me for my opinions. I tried to downplay what he was doing. He persisted. I tried to walk away multiple times. He followed me. When I tried to remove myself from his presence, he followed me yet again, getting angrier, red-faced, yelling, even finally sticking his finger in my face and telling me that he's the new sheriff in town. He would have most likely followed me out of the building had another person not intervened. That person told him to leave me alone, and I believe they thought that he was going to hit me. You would think that the mayor would know that this is all caught on video. And for any of you out there that have doubts about what I'm saying, it's there for anyone to see with a public records request, and I also have his email. Someone approached him about the situation the next day. I think at this time, he realized his behavior was obviously very inappropriate. It resulted in an apology email to me. It would have probably been more effective had you used the words, "I'm sorry," or "I apologize." I'm addressing this tonight because it was my only way to get this in front of the council and citizens of Wausau. I find it interesting that just days later, he wrote an opinion piece to Wausau Pilot about how the city council is trying to suppress public communication. This is rich in light of his behavior. I feel very suppressed by him and frankly bullied and harassed because of my own public opinion. And now he wants to put his own people on the Ethics Committee, who will stand in judgment of his behavior, including one person that has donated $5,000 towards his GoFundMe that is set up to defend him for actions the board is investigating. Does this seem right?
Well, I reckon, the chair recognizes that it appears the, Mr. Moro was asking for an apology, and without, without objection, I would certainly offer something like that. You know, it was interesting that, and my, my account is slightly different, however, be it that as it may, it's ironic that the subject matter was modern office etiquette and an issue with, with an employee within the building that I was trying to deal with. So I would say, and I did speak to your mother the next day at the Y, and, and it was a good conversation. She did point out a few things. The mayor is, I would expect, as a citizen, the mayor to be, to maintain the highest of standards in, in communicating with the public. So I will, I will offer that, that I, I expect the mayor to set the standard, and I will strive to continue to do that. Thank you. All right, up next. Oh, we have a port of public works insurance claim. Are we taking that now, Ann? Okay, so we don't need to? Okay. All right, consent agenda is up next, and we had one item that was pulled. Did you get that logged?
Item 25-0424 was requested to be pulled from the consent.
Okay, I would entertain a motion on consent agenda less that item. Motion from Watson, second from Larson.
Item 25-0424, the resolution from finance authorizing, authorization to enter into memorandum of understanding between the city of Wausau and Marathon County Health Department for implementation of the lead hazard reduction capacity building grant through the Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, was requested to be pulled from consent.
Thank you.
Ready to vote?
Yep, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, you may begin voting. Alders Gisselman and McElany? The motion passes eight to two.
Okay, is that?
On consent, on the consent agenda.
Okay. Is everyone good with that? Okay? Two no votes on consent. All right, we'll take that item up. If I got to read it here, it's 25-0424. This is a resolution from finance authorizing, or resolution authorization to enter into memorandum of understanding between the city of Wausau and Marathon County Health Department for implementation of the lead service reduction capacity building grant through the Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And that, that came to us from finance four to zero. And would entertain a motion. Motion from Lukens. And it looks like a second from Martins. Okay, request to speak from Alder Tierney.
I might need Tammy to come up and answer a couple of questions that I have. I saw the paperwork entered, and I guess one of my questions was, when looking at the application, it said only 20% could be used towards administrative. Are we going to make that 20% between the 500 and 5,000 that we want? And I'm sure Marathon County is sticking in an equal amount.
Oh, you're talking the matched amount? Is that what you're?
I'm talking about the, it said that we could only use a certain percentage of that grant towards administrative.
Correct.
And we're going to make it with these, these costs?
Yeah, it's a different way of looking at it with how you, when you're working with grants, you get to, when you're working on a specific project, it's not considered administrative costs, it's not what's considered a direct cost. So now you're part of the, the project or the program versus administration. So with the memorandum of understanding with the county, they're more of a direct cost because they are working towards doing what the program is supposed to be, which is spreading education, providing training for additional contractors, risk assessors, getting into people's homes. So it's not specifically admin. Admin would be the clerical person helping making copies, sending out applications. So it, it's really interesting of how you have to differentiate your time. I do it all the time with block grant. If I'm working on a specific problem, it's not an admin cost, it's a project delivery cost. So that's the difference. So yes, we will easily be able to be under that amount.
And my other question was, we had talked about remediation, does not just recognizing it, but doing remediation, is that also in this, or was this?
This is, this is just them helping with getting our capacity built up. It's not the remediation part. There is a portion of the grant, it's about 500,000, that will go towards direct remediation of projects. But we're not allowed to do that until year, almost into year three. So our first two years are capacity building, getting contractors, getting the word out, educating the community, finding partners, how do we identify those projects that qualify for the grant? And then after that, we can start getting into homes.
And then my last question is, is Marathon County sticking in 500 and 5,000 as well? Or are we split?
They have, they have a 25% match that they need to. So of that 500,000, and an additional 25% of that, and I got a feeling they're going to probably do 50% match.
Because I just know that for a couple of these positions, it was supposed to be 50/50.
Well, with, with this grant, 75% of the program manager, which is at the Health Department, how do I say, the program manager has to spend 75% on this grant. So 75% of her time will definitely come from this grant. But when it comes time to working with their other staff, doing the risk assessments, doing the clearance reports, identifying the scope of works, getting out and, and educating people, they do this daily. Now they can track their time and use this as matched. So it's, I know they're going to be able to easily find that match.
Okay, I just, I was.
And we have to track it and report it, so.
I was just, since this was, we were hurting with Marathon County, I was just wondering how that split was going to be.
Right, so they are, they are responsible for their 25% match. We are not responsible for matching that 25%.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Tier, Killian.
Hi, Tammy. I was on finance at the time this came to us, to committee, and my recollection was that they talked about one person, and now they're presenting a whole department. Do we have any, it says that we're going to be billed monthly. Do we have any idea how much we will be billed?
Well, we have, the contract is for X amount of dollars. So without us doing like a change order request, they have to stay under that. I meet with them monthly, so I know what kind of work that they're putting into. And they are showing all the different people in their department that can assist with this grant. That doesn't mean they're necessarily going to bill them. Just like with our grant, with the, we talk about Mary Ann, the finance director, and we talk about our staff that can help deliver our, these, what we're supposed to be doing. But we're not necessarily billing the grant. That's our matched funds because we're doing our day-to-day job, and yeah, we might answer some questions, but now it's what we would normally do, so it's considered our match. So I don't foresee that they're going to bill us specifically for those other people. It's mainly the program manager who has the majority of her time for this grant, and then her superior. It's been the three of us working on this together, trying to figure out how are we going to get the deliverables that we need to get to.
If it's going to be primarily the program director that we will be billed for, shouldn't the resolution state that? I mean, this, it feels like this kind of leaves us wide open to being billed for the work of all of these people, and that seems pretty ambiguous to me.
Well, I guess the resolution directs the MOU, so to me, that, they are, they go hand in hand.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further comments.
You may begin voting. Motion passes time to zero.
Thank you. Up next is file number 250402, Mayor's Appointments. And I'd like to just read a little statement. There's been a lot that's happened today. There was, there was a DOJ court hearing today, shed some light on some things, as well as the Ethics Board met again today, and they chose to adjourn for four months. And the, there was an offer to And the, there was an offer to, or there was a motion to dismiss without prejudice that didn't get a second, and then there was a resignation. So there would be one person who will not be, who has resigned. So with that, we have some things to consider. We have a motion from Lukens, second from Larson, and I'll just read my statement real quickly. Some council members have objected to my recent Ethics Board appointments citing optics and the timing of of a future hearing, but it is the law, not optics, that must guide our actions. The municipal code clearly assigns the responsibility of making these appointments to the mayor. Three of the current appointees, some of whom were improperly assigned extended terms, have now reached the end of their service. It is my duty under the city code and the Wisconsin law to make these appointments and restore the proper staggered terms as originally intended. Delaying appointments based on unrelated political speculation undermines both this process and the public trust. We cannot allow perceptions or assumptions of bad faith to override established procedures or or legal responsibilities. That path leads to a deeply partisan and dysfunctional government, one where appointments are judged not on merit, but on whether someone is perceived to be on the right team. The only question for the, before the council should be whether a nominee is qualified and able to serve with integrity. Arguments based on assumptions, motives, or optics are not germane to the council's role in confirming appointments. So let's be clear, let's set a clear, consistent precedent of integrity. The mayor appoints, the council deliberates, and confirms based on qualifications, not politics. Let's uphold our charter, stay focused on facts, and take principled, logical votes. And you have the, a packet, if you need me to read these, we can go through them, but I, there are maybe a few people who would like to speak or answer questions. Up first, we have to speak is Alder Watson.
I guess I just had one question. I think we voted on a sustainability candidate last month, so that one, I guess, should be removed.
Okay, I, that one was there only for the reason that it didn't name the person's, and you are correct, what she was put on, the seat she was actually filling, so it was a vacant seat, and I wanted to confirm that.
Cool. I also wanted just to ask, so I guess I have a couple comments, but one question is, so Joe Jean's seat, is he resigning as well from Water Commission?
Joe Jean has, yes, he, he has had two full terms, plus at the end of last year, he, he desired to stay a little longer, didn't necessarily want to go five years, and we struck an agreement, he, he got a next year, so he's been on 11 years.
So he sort of just wants to step away?
And I talked to him, and there's another opportunity for for potential other committee that he would be suited for. So I did talk to him, and he's good with the move.
Okay, and then I also noticed in the packet, two of the four Ethics Board's applications weren't in there. I saw Dr. Garver and De Hadley, but I didn't see the other two. I didn't know if they had applied or not.
They, they had, they had not gone online and done a portal application, but I did talk to both, and they were willing to serve. And the information on their background was provided in the, in the email. Ald, done? Okay, Alder Lukens.
Thank you. I am asking for, to separate the Ethics Commission appointments in a separate motion from the other committee appointments, so that those are in one separate motion from the others. As listed right now, we would be voting on all of them at one time, and so I'm asking for the Ethics Committee appointments to be addressed separately in one motion. So do I need to make a motion for that?
So we have a motion to separate.
Do you want to push your amend button?
Oh, yes. Let me see. So do I have to, it would be to amend the motion, so that the Ethics Board appointments are dealt with in one motion, and then the other appointments are dealt with in another separately.
Do you have a preference on which one is taken out first?
How about the other one first, the one with all the other appointments? There were quite a few. Reappointments.
So I'll read them, just so as we're, as we're typing. Plan Commission is Andrew Brugerman. He's being reappointed to his seat for three years, term expires the 4/30/28. Sustainability is the new one with Brittany Grimmer, and that's a belt and suspenders there. Arts Commission, we have three open arts commission, three expired arts commission. We've got several applications, and we're gonna look back for the 13th before the next Arts Commission meeting. And the Water Commission is Deborah Hadley. That's a new appointment, filling Joe Jean's seat, and for the balance of his term, because as you mentioned, he's, he's done one of a five-year terms, so he'll be, that'll be 2029. Just to review, we had Dennis Seitz for the Airport Committee, that's a reappointment. Mark Dillman, I've talked to Mark and Dennis, a reappointment for Board of Zoning Appeals to a seat for three years. Actually, that's his, this will be his sixth term. So Board of Zoning Appeals, as well as our Building Advisory Board, requires people with building trades, building skills, engineering, and he, he meets that, and he's been willing to hang around for that long. So if you know anyone in the future will eventually need to fill that guy. And then Sarah Nap Gesick, that's another reappointment, that's a four-year term for the CDA.
So, so motion to amend to take up the appointments to the Airport Committee, Board of Zoning Appeals, sorry, I don't know why it formatted like that, Board of Zoning Appeals, Community Development Authority, the Plan Commission, and the Sustainability Committee, and the Wausau Water Works Commission.
Okay. No, we had a motion to amend from Lukens, second from Watson. Any further discussion on those, that palette, that plate of appointees? Seeing none.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
All right, while she's typing, I'll read. For the Ethics Board, we have Lon Roberts, former managing partner of the Ruderware Law Firm. He is also the former SWIB, that's the State of Wisconsin Investment Board Chairman, and also former State of Wisconsin Secretary to the Department of Financial Services. He will fill Brian Mason's seat for a partial term of three years upon completion of his duties. So that would be from 5/1/25 to 4/30/2028. And Brian Mason's is the term that, is the, is the one who announced his resignation today. Up next is Dr. Thomas Garver. Dr. Garver is a retired orthopedic surgeon from the Marshfield Clinic. He's a United States Military Academy graduate at West Point, and a graduate of the Uniformed Services, University of Health Services. He is current, he currently serves on the Wausau Police and Fire Commission. He will fill Robin DeVos's seat for a partial four-year term upon completion of her duties. And then Deb, Deborah Hadley is a retired Wausau businesswoman and co-owner of Hadley Office Products. She served on the Wausau School Board and the Wausau City Council, where she served as council president. She will fill Doug Hostler's seat for a period of five-year term upon completion of Hostler's duty on the current hearing. And finally, we have Kevin Hermaning, a Wausau Private Wealth Advisor, who holds an undergraduate and graduate degree in business from administration from UW Stevens Point. He will fill the open alternate seat for a one-year term, and starting tomorrow, ending So we're counting for the inappropriately staggered group. There were four people who were originally appointed to the same term back in around 21, 22 timeframe. So by code, by, by municipal code, that board is required to have staggered terms, so that we have, we have only one appointment required every year. And by doing so, we, we don't run into these problems where we have a potential mass exodus, exodus of three or four people, either in the middle of work, or, you know, just, just as a normal course of, of expirations. It's not a best practice, and it's code. All right, we set? Okay. That would entertain a motion on the Ethics Board appointees. Last chance. I've got a motion from Mr. Neal, and looking for a second, and a second from Alder Killian. Alder Larsonson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it bears repeating that we held action on an Ethics Board nominee just over a month, well, two months ago now, with the understanding that it was our intention to not fill vacant seats until the matter currently before the board has been resolved one way or the other. Those circumstances are the same today as they were then. And we talked for a half hour that night about trying to do this fairly and be fair to the applicant. And the way we held action on that item was to leave open the possibility that that person could always reapply. So if we just blindly take these four, we've not been fair to that guy either. So I guess I have some concerns about filling those spots now, and I have some definite concerns about filling them with some of these folks. And I will say that the council received an email today, I hope everyone read it, with some legal guidance, talking about the liability that could be incurred if we make these appointments, where it is obvious even to the layperson that it will be very difficult for some of those individuals to maintain impartiality with the complaint that's before the board today. At least one of those folks has broadcast opinions in local broadcast media about city staff, council members, witnesses, about the specific matter that is before that board. And I think it would be irresponsible of us to fill those vacancies now, but it's more irresponsible for us to fill them with these people. And so there is no way that I'm voting for this tonight. Thank you.
Well, just as a point of review here, so we're all on the same page, I did go back and look at the video and, and reviewed that meeting where that decision was made. That decision was made to table that in the, with the understanding that in the case of an emergency or some unforeseen event, we would have to make a change. So this was six or eight weeks ago. We didn't have a timeline at that time. We didn't know that they were gonna set a hearing. Now we know they are setting a hearing, they've set it for tomorrow, they jerked that today, and they put it out four months. So we know there's a timeline. We also know there's a, there's a vacancy on both alternates. It's the reason we're in the situation we're in, we didn't have the properly structured board. We, we have a resignation today that puts us down to four. You cannot hold a hearing over the course of four months. Standby. The point of having the full board and alternates is so that you can conduct a hearing, there hasn't been a hearing yet. So all of the evidence collected to date could potentially, I'm not gonna get into the case, let's talk about the germane principles of what we're here to do, and I read a statement covers it pretty well. So things did change since then. We have a different timeline, and we're, and we have a resignation. We don't have an out if we lose somebody, we have another recusal or somebody resigns. The other thing that has changed is at that time, we could have had the hearing tomorrow, and it would be done on the 30th. If you recall, Mr. Dexter wanted to get the hearing in before the end of the term. The end of the term is tomorrow. So are we gonna wait four more months? I think that's irresponsible. And then what do you do when you have another, if you pick up another committee? And lastly, on the, on the applicants themselves, or the appointees themselves, they would be required to hold themselves to the same standard of recusal as every other board member currently sitting. That includes my opponent from the 2022 election, who I beat by 20 votes, who is now on, on the board. They all have the same requirement and obligation, whether it's a mandatory recusal or whether it's a discretionary recusal. It's well laid out how to do that. So you're, you're impugning people, like I said, for, for what team they're on, or perceived team. That's not the way we do it. Alder Neal.
Go ahead.
Thank you. With regards to the, what says here, the open seat for alternate, are there supposed to be? be two alternates for this board?
Yes, there are two. And as we discovered in the Deb Ryan case, we went through, the reason, actually, they were added because we discovered that board was not strong enough, or it was not properly structured so that it could handle recusals. It's a small town. When you have a claim against an elected official, they know a lot of people. There were recusals. If you recall, the chair quit during the middle of that hearing, or during that process, so they had to replace him. So that's the reason why, I think it was Mayor Rosen, we added the two alternates, so that we would be in a robust situation. So now you move forward with four, what do you have when one goes down, or one recuses, or we get another claim? We don't have any capacity. Did I answer your question, Mr. Neal?
Sure, but I have a follow-up if I could. So while going forward, I mean, we don't, we have people nominated here for seats that haven't been resigned, and they don't have to resign by the given date unless they wish to. I don't think we've had any indication, other than the one resignation, that anybody else wishes to resign. So pending nobody leaving, then we don't need to be voting on anybody to replace them until such time as there is an open seat. So I think it's a pretty moot point. Several of these positions are not literally open. We have one open, Mr. Mason's seat, and he's open, his seat is open, starting on the first. That would leave one, two, only three voting members then, if we did not fill that seat?
It would, it, four. Currently four, because one of the alternate, the alternate that was there, Mr. Kearns moved, is filling a seat on the board.
Right, I'm saying though, but there's not four after this, after Mr. Mason resigns?
There will be four, yes, with the alternate, yes. So it would be...
Could you outline them for me, please?
Mr. Dexter, Mr. Kearns, Robin DeVos, and Doug Hostler, and whose terms are expiring tomorrow as well.
Okay, and then a fifth who is just recused for this particular issue.
Oh, that, yes, I forgot about that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, it's needed that clarification. I'm concerned about filling or approving any of these at this time. I would like to see this process go through to its end, and then we'll see what the members of the board wish to do with their seats at that time. It seems to me they want to continue, you know, with what they've started. So I don't want to be appointing their, or okaying their replacements at this point. I just don't think this is proper, the optics are not good, and let's just let this thing go through. We have enough people to conduct it. If there is an emergency, as you say, then we can deal with that as it comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Green light.
I was listening to Alder Rasmussen's comments, and I agree with her that we need to be fair to the individual, but I don't know if that individual wanted to reapply, or I would guess that there are circumstances that maybe the mayor might know about that individual. Also, I did read the email today that implied that there may be some legalities that we would be facing if we accept these appointments, but I have no idea what those legalities might be. So I guess I would like to have that information. If indeed we're facing legalities by accepting appointments, I would like to know what those legalities might be before proceeding to do anything. Thank you.
Well, I'm not familiar with which legal opinion. I did have a recommendation and a legal opinion from my legal counsel to put these forward in accordance with the municipal code, so that's what I'm doing.
I guess to know if I'm facing legal problems because I accept an appointment, I would like to have specific information about what legalities there might be. So I'm not comfortable...
You would have legislative immunity, you're not, there's no, I'm not going to give you legal advice from here, but I would question that as a problem, for a number of reasons. I'd need to know the specifics, but we can take them one by one. But go, let's continue. Alder Lukens.
Okay, so as a member of the policymaking body and of this organization, I'm extremely uncomfortable with any kind of legal advice being given to us, other than the attorney who represents the city, that is the person that...
Eric Larson?
Did caution...
Eric Larson, who is, I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
Attorney Jacobson.
Oh, I see.
You did not see the email?
I did not.
Well, attorney, the city attorney is the attorney that is, that protects the city. So if you have a different attorney of your own, that's different, but anyway. So that's who I will be following, is the attorney representing the city and us. And I am not, I agree with Alder Neal, I agree with Alder Rasmussen and Alder Killian, that I'm not going to do anything that could set us or you up, because that was a concern, because the city attorney also represents you as part of this body, and that anything that would set any of us up for any kind of legal issues. So I do agree, I, you know, I'm just going to say also that I have been hearing from constituents that they are tired of this, at meeting after meeting after meeting, and want us all to get back to work for the city, for the people. So I would be very happy, I would like it if we could do that, and I personally would like to give the people on the current Ethics Commission the time to fulfill their roles as, you know, legal precedent has been set in the state, that they're able to do that and to stay after their, you know, end date of their term. So anyway, with that, I would not be, I will not be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to agree with all what's been said. I mean, nothing has really changed in my mind since February. I don't see how, if it would be ethical for me to be appointing, to be okaying appointments when there's an ongoing investigation. And, you know, I just agree with Alder, everything that's been said, but I just want to bring another couple of points, too, is, you know, it's no, this poor Ethics Committee, you know, they have been intimidated after intimidated, and it just really needs to stop so they can just do their job, you know, and so we can get done with this and move the city forward. One other thing I'd like to bring to your attention is, I don't feel comfortable, maybe, and it's just me, there was a press release with these nominations brought out last week, but yet there was nothing in our packet until six forty yesterday, when I got an email, which is ten minutes after the deadline for the open meetings or open meeting requirements. So, and technically, this whole thing is not legal because we weren't given this in our packet until six forty yesterday. And so, but it might be nitpicky, but, I mean, coming from Mr. Mayor, I know how adamant you are about your six-day rule, about putting stuff into a packet six days, so we have a chance to read it, but where was it? It wasn't there. So I'm, I'm, I, we just need to get back to doing stuff and doing stuff right, you know? I won't be supporting this. I, we really need to just let the Ethics Committee do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. The legal advice that we referred to came to us by email on Friday, April 25th, from the city attorney, who had learned of the potential nominations to the Ethics Board because they were released in a press release rather than in the meeting packets. It appeared obvious to me that you had seen that email, because on Monday morning, you emailed her with a copy to your own attorneys criticizing her for it.
Just, one sec.
That said, that said, another response came out today, to which the entire council was copied, and her advice to us talked about potential risks to the organization should we choose to approve these. It also addressed your assertion that because she is recused in advising the Ethics Board, that she is not able to advise us here, and those are two totally different things, which she outlined in her response today. Her organizational client, and I think it's important to always remember this, her organizational client is the city of Wausau as a corporate entity and its political body, political governing body, as a functioning total unit. It's not any one of us individually, but the actions of all of us impact that organization. And that's what she has to put at the forefront of all of her advice and all of her decision-making, which she did today in the email we received. And, you know, the email specifically outlines, they are four, like appointments to a board of five. So you're creating a majority that on its face appears to be partisanship at its height. Now, the fact that the Ethics Board today deferred action on any hearing for four months, I feel like gives you four months to go out and find objective people, who don't have the appearance of having any dog in this fight, no donations to anybody's campaign, and, you know, no one out running around the community, defending, supporting, whatever, any of this stuff. We need to find objective citizens that will do the job. We now have time to do that. And so, you know, if it's a matter of there's difficulty in finding those individuals, I guess I would recommend gathering a roundtable of your key staff people and getting some guidance from them as to how they could assist and manage the process of locating objective nominees. Because I just don't feel that we are making the best decision we can make for the organization if we approve these. And I feel like the position we're in now, with a motion on the floor, is to vote them down or vote them through. And so I don't have a choice, but I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
I get the distinct feeling that this is going to be voted down, and I guess before, I mean, if it is voted down, I think we need to keep in mind that it is the mayor's responsibility to appoint these people. And if I'm wrong, I need to be shown that that's not correct. Finding objective people, does that mean finding somebody who's not a Democrat or not a Republican? Because I do believe a lot of this has become very partisan. And we need to take a look, if this is voted down and the mayor appoints people after the Ethics Board has drawn its conclusions, we need to take a look at the qualifications of the people and not what party we think they belong to. I'm an independent, I don't belong to any party, and I still have opinions. So I think finding objective people is going to be based on who's trying to say they're objective or not. I think we need to keep in mind that it is the mayor's responsibility to do this, and if it has to be after the Ethics Board has made its final decision, so be it. But keep in mind that it says it's his responsibility, and we, at some point in time, have to say, are these people qualified or are they not? And that's, that's just how I'm feeling right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would remind you that this body, a couple of, several months back, at the recommendation of the city attorney, hired an outside counsel from municipal law, Eric Larson, to advise the city on the Ethics Board. So on Ethics, Ethics Board matters. So this, this would seem to be a, a question for that outside attorney. Be that as it may, we have some of the people here tonight. If you're, if you're interested, I mentioned we have a, we have a current Police and Fire Commissioner here. Would you like to hear from any of these people? I think they could, they could tell us something. Oh, we have it. I'll stop talking. Alder Mattley.
Thank you. I take my role here very seriously, and the last thing I want is to put the city in jeopardy of financial situations. I've been on the council for a long time. When I first came into the council, there were a lot of checks being written to a lot of people because of some things going on, and so it can happen. And I have to keep that in mind. That is my, my biggest thing, is I have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents of District Six and beyond, that we are not going to put any of our actions would be jeopardizing a legal action. I have no specific problems with any of these people, but we have made it very clear, and the legal, the legal issue that we had received, and the legal opinion we received stating, it wasn't about these people, it was, we have an action going on, and we can't switch four more people in to this during this action. What I feel about the Ethics Board and the situation and the whole thing is moot to everybody but me. So I don't have, I agree that the mayor, any mayor, this is my third, can do an appointment, it needs to be confirmed by council. I don't have a grouse about the people, but we have been advised, I think in two emails in the last week, that this, that it causes some legal jeopardy for the city. And that is the reason why I am strong about this, about making sure that my decisions are not done in an emotional way, but by being very deliberative and thinking, how can I best protect this city? This is not a good situation. It hasn't been a good situation for a very long time. And I hope it ends faster than anything, because we need to move on. I agree with Alder Larson, and Alder Killian, we need to move forward because there's plenty of business to do in the city. So I can't support this. I just have one question for the city attorney. We have now four people, can we go with a hearing with four people? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate knowing that as well about the hearing, and I just will reiterate my own, my own perspective on this again, is to do what we are... we are doing with integrity to protect the city, to do what's best for the city, for residents. And with that, I would like to call the question. Oh, except, I would like to give, I would like to give Alder Tierney the chance to talk, to speak.
Thank you. Alder Tierney.
Thank you. I haven't had a chance to speak on this, and I was listening very carefully to what everybody had to say. And I have to concur with Alder Killian. I, I don't think right now is probably the appropriate time because we are in the middle of an Ethics Committee investigation. And to take and replace four people right now, I don't think would be in the best interest of the city. I too, really, since I came into office shortly after that, this city has spent the majority of their time on these ongoing suits. I don't feel that I, as a representative of District Nine or of this city, have had the chance to do what is best for this city. I don't feel like we have had the opportunity to work on the things that we felt were important at the beginning of the year when we sat as a, as a body and looked at what we felt were the top important things. We really haven't had a chance to scratch the surface of those. I personally think there are some good candidates on here and would not have a problem with some of them. I just don't think now is the time. And I think when that time comes after this is completed, that you do have the authority to appoint who you feel would be best for this committee. And, um, because that is the way it's supposed to be, that you appoint them and then we confirm that. But my biggest issue is that this has been the forefront for many months, and I, as a new council person, am very concerned about all the other things that this city needs our attention to. Thank you.
It definitely has been a distraction. I, I would like to clear up one thing, though, that we have to, that, that there has not been a hearing yet. So, so any action, there really has been no action. So anything, if there's going to be a hearing in four months, any new board can read the packets. There has been no, there's been no depositions, there's been no testimony. So, so we're not interrupting a hearing, to be clear. And then there was some mention of some donation. There's, there's apparently a site out there for a legal fund not produced by me, not endorsed, sanctioned, or promoted by me. A third party did that, so it is not money that I have not seen one nickel from that. And if that person were to do something about money, I would hope they would send it to my attorney, but that is, that is not my doing. You can't hear? Okay. It looks like we have one more to speak. Mr. Neal.
Thank you. Not to be cat and obvious or anything, I just want to make sure everybody understands, and all those here too, that as we probably shortly are going to vote on this, a vote of yes approves the appointments, a vote of no does not.
That would be correct. So it looks like we're getting close to that point. Did, does anyone?
You may, you may begin voting.
Which one are we voting for?
This is for the mayor's appointment to the Ethics Board.
Okay.
Failed zero to 10.
All right. We'll watch that one over the next four months. All right, up next. Anyone need a break? Here we are. We're getting into some good stuff. It's another mayor's appointment. It's 250402, mayor's appointment to the position of Human Resources Director. And I would like to call up our newly minted Human Resources Director, Lisa Noack. Please come up and introduce yourself.
Hi. So my name's Lisa Noack. I've been a resident here on and off, but for the most part, most of my life. I have a 10-year-plus professional experience in HR in the private sector and am excited to bring my HR expertise into the, the public arena. In my three weeks that I have been working here, I can tell you that I am astonished at the level of care and professionalism and frankly, the, the amount of expertise that these city employees have and the care they have for our community. And that really inspires me to support those employees who are supporting our taxpayers and our citizens of Wausau. And that's very important to me, to provide that, that sense of psychological safety and HR expertise to, to our staff who are supporting everybody else in this city. So I am happy and excited to get started, and I really look forward to meeting each one of you individually and understanding what you hope HR can do for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. We have a motion from Watson, second from Tierney.
You may begin voting. Motion passes nine to one.
Welcome aboard, Lisa. All right. We've got up next is file. You probably get away with a clap on that one. All right. 250423, Public Health and Safety, Ordnance Amending Section 9.20.050, Personal Conduct and Nuisance and Creating, Section 9.20.055, and Toxicants in Public Publicity. And that came to us three to two from Public Health and Safety. I have a motion from Lukens, second from Neal. Up first is Alder McElhenney.
Thank you. I'm one of the two that voted against this, and I will vote against it again. This came to us, I guess I heard part of this in parks, and I had mis, um, misheard. I thought they were going to do pop-up beer gardens with individual vendors going. I found out in Public Health and Safety, the plan is to have the Parks Department and, which could be city staff as well, do pop-up beer gardens. They would, the staff would be the bartenders after getting bartender training, and we would be selling, what I understand, maybe beer, I guess malt beverages or whatever, and, and it would move around in different parks. My major issue with this is the City of Wausau, as a government and as a public service organization, I feel very strongly should not be selling alcohol. I don't think it's, I think the optics are horrible. I have, you know, we, we have enough problems. I guess there's a number of issues. Going to a park when kids are, are in the playground and we're going to have, we're going to start slinging beers. I, you know, if it was a vendor, I probably would say, let's try it, but not with city employees at all. I, I just think the optics are not there. The second thing I have a question about is liability. We asked some questions of the Park Director, and my recollection was that we haven't figured out the details yet. But I went to a neighborhood meeting, and I brought this up as a possibility, and my county board supervisor was there as well. She was surprised, she didn't hear about this. But the question was, what happens when somebody has a couple of beers and then hits a kid on the way out of a park? Will that liability go back to the server? Does, do they have to prove over-serving, or if somebody is over point, point eight or point zero eight, will that do it? I, I don't know. And I think there's so many questions. My third and final thing is that this, they want to change an incredibly ordinance before they have the details of it. We have no idea how it's going to work. How are we going, are we going to wristband? How are we going to check IDs? What is that plan? What's that plan? We don't know, but let's change the ordinance first. So I am absolutely 100% against this. If it does go through, I hope that our legal department and everyone work together to make sure that this can be done safely and that we are, you know, I'm flabbergasted. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Alder Watson.
So I serve on the Park Commission, and we discussed that this morning. And it was a resounding zero to four vote in, against changing the county ordinance. So, and a lot of the same points came up that Alder McElhenney was mentioning is, you know, like liability, that was a question. Just the idea that a lot of our parks are for family activities, that kind of thing, and, and, you know, pushing, not pushing, but like having it there. They were just sort of saying it's like another option to not, like have an event that's not in, with alcohol, because we do live in a culture that's very saturated with it. So, I mean, I initially voted the first two times for it because I was thinking about it as like a revenue stream. And it sounds like from what Jamie Polly mentioned today in the Parks Commission, I mean, they've talked to lots of municipality, well, two municipalities that have done these kind of pop-up venues before. So they've done some research, but I, I can see their point of not wanting to do a lot of background work if all of a sudden we're going to say no, right? So this is good to have this discussion, like even if we have a palette for it, if we, if this is something we want to do. But I sort of do, I am switching, switching my perspective because I do think it's, it's, even though it would be a good revenue stream, I just think it's, um, I don't know, we have a lot of other stuff we can do. And our Parks Department's already uber busy, it's already uber stretched. And so I would like us to put our efforts into, you know, those fun activities that our kids can enjoy this summer without having, you know, malt beverage floating around. So, but I just wanted to fill you guys in on how the Park Commission was this, this morning. So they were sort of on a wait and see, like they wanted to see what we would do, but they decided to just go ahead and take a stand, and then that went on to the Environmental Resource Commission. So, thanks.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate hearing that from Alder Watson because I was wondering what was decided at the Park Commission today. I had received some, some residents reached out to me and were asking about this. And so my plan for tonight was going to ask for us to postpone this for final vote until the next meeting so that I could get a chance to hear from more residents. Now, I guess I don't know if the Park Commission did not approve it. I don't know then how that affects if that would be for county parks. So I guess, then I don't know if, I guess I could still ask that. I don't know if it pays to or not, but that's my, I would, I guess either way, maybe it doesn't hurt to postpone it until the next meeting for a final vote. I don't know, I'm open to listening. There are some other people who want to speak, so I'll listen, I'll wait and hear them all. Thanks.
Thank you. Alder Tierney.
Thank you. I was a bartender years ago, and at that time, if I over-served a person, it came back to me, it was on me. So if I over-served somebody and they hit somebody or hit something, it would have come back to me. So it was my responsibility to stop serving somebody to protect myself and them. So that may have changed, but, and I can tell you, if this was a rotation and they told me it was my turn to go down to Brockmire Park, where Jojo's Jungle is, and serve a pop-up beer stand, there is no way wild horses could drag me there to do it. Wouldn't happen. I understand having beer gardens at events like Wisconsin Valley Fair, absolutely. I understand letting somebody have a glass of wine while they're sitting down at the 400 block, listening to a band, but to have pop-up bars in perks, I don't see anything good coming from that, and I will not support this.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think that this, the outcome of this is really going to show us the value of debate amongst ourselves in a chamber like this. When this first came to us, I'll say when I first started on the council, if someone had brought this to me, I would have been a hard no immediately. Having talked it through in the Park Committee, I ended up voting for it in parks, and I voted for it in Public Health and Safety, but given the action of the County Park Commission and the points made by Alder McElhenney, which make complete sense, and Alder Tierney's comments, what if we are the servers? What does that look like? Like, you can't put that on a city employee as well, or on a park department employee. So I, I guess, is the revenue that would be derived from this worth the optics? And so it came out of Public Health and Safety on a mixed vote. And I think that my peers have talked me into voting against this at council because originally, the way we came out of the Public Health and Safety Committee was that it was going to be a one-year trial for this summer season, and then we were going to take stock of like how this went. Do we want to continue, or is this just not going to work? And that said, even as a trial, the optics are still there. So I think that I am going to also oppose this tonight and change course on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Oh, I was on, um, yeah, I too, I think I'm going to do an about-face on this as well. I don't feel comfortable, i- if it were, if it were a pop-up beer gardens and stuff where, you know, let's say like if a brewery were to come into town and bring their personnel and stuff in and do their stuff and do their thing in a pop-up park, I, I probably wouldn't have a, a problem with it. And then, and then, you know, have a, have the proceeds, you know, a portion of the proceeds or come back to the city and stuff. But, but, you know, to, to go ahead and, and take this on completely as a city, you know, and be a city-operated and, and have city employees tapping beer and stuff, I think that, you know, our city employees can have enough to do without having to worry about serving beer at a garden. And so, and with the liabilities and stuff involved with this too, I, I, I'm going to do an about-face on it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Thank you. I wonder if we could get Director, Parks Director Polly to come on up to the desk. Simple question. No feet to the fire. You know, when we first started talking about this, the kind of model that was referenced was the one that's employed in Marquette, Milwaukee City Parks. It has been for years, and it's, it's very popular. It's, it's a small thing. It's not a big, huge festival or whatnot. It's generally a beer truck and some food trucks and a little circle of wagons and a couple of picnic tables. And they've been doing it for years. It's very well-attended and appreciated. How much does the model that they employ resemble what we've been talking about here? Because I, I never had the impression that in Milwaukee, Milwaukee City employees or Parks employees were, you know, running the show and serving the beer. I always thought it was a vendor coming in and whatnot. So how did that, is that model what we're talking about here or, or different?
It is what we're talking about here. So in the city of Milwaukee, or the county of Milwaukee, not the city, the county did pass an ordinance, or it can be done by ordinance or resolution per the state statute, and they did allow their Parks Department to develop these beer gardens. So they have five permanent. So they have five permanent beer gardens at five different parks. And then they have a couple of traveling trucks. They put out an RFP to partner with different breweries in town to sponsor a certain night or local distributors to sponsor a certain night. And then that's how they get their, their beer that they sell. And they set up, it is a beer truck or a beer trailer that they bring with food trucks, put out some picnic tables, and it's another option that they provide within their parks all over the city. But it is the county staff that does operate them. And they've all gone through the Safe Server Program. That's not required, but it's highly recommended and that's, if the council decides this is something you want our department to move forward with, that's what we will do too. But that is what it would be monolifer and that is what they do there. And Milwaukee looked at it, in Milwaukee, that's obviously much bigger than Wausau. The reason why their staff looked at it was just another source of revenue because Milwaukee County Parks are in, were, they're doing much better now, but they were in dire straits as far as funding and, you know, their management a few years ago.
Okay. Well, I, I just want to say I really appreciate all the effort that you put into looking into this and all the research and whatnot. I was a strong proponent of the idea from the point of view of partnering with vendors who would come in, run the show, you know, we would provide the space, they run the show, they have the licensing, they have the, you know, responsibility to serve responsibly and all that. I'm not really comfortable with the city taking on that, that, so if that's the only way that we could make this happen, I would have to say I'm, I'm an about-face. And is it the only way that we could make this happen?
No, that's just the, that's one way where it makes it easier for the city to provide it is by doing this as a program that the city does. There is, you could have, you could put out RFP for vendors to do it throughout the city, but then it takes much more look into the ordinances that you have in place because currently if a vendor were to come in, they'd have to get a specific liquor license, there's a premise permit, I don't know all the details, but I know that they have to go through a lot more hoops in order to get the ability to serve outside of their walls or outside of their space that they're approved for. So I believe it's going to take some more, it's going to take some ordinance amendments that way too, I believe, probably to allow them to do it in the way that you're talking. I think we have picnic license now that they could get, but then there's a fencing requirement. There's a lot more requirements that go along with that. So it makes it, it's different than what you and I had talked about where it was like Milwaukee does it, you know, they have a set area, but it's not a fenced-in area. It's open, it's, it's inviting. Our ordinance right now would make it be fenced, I believe.
Yes, and then there are different restrictions if it's a manufacturer, like a, like a brewery who would be, you know, coming to these parks or if it would be like a local tavern. There are different restrictions on the type of license they currently hold in the city.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further.
You may begin voting.
You meant, you meant to vote no.
I meant to vote no. Yes.
Okay. Motion fails zero to ten.
Okay, up next is two five, zero four two five. This is a finance resolution and I'll probably have our assessor, Rugal, come up if, or Mary Ann take this one. A resolution approving alleged claim for recovery of unlawful tax at Green Acres at Greenwood Hills, L C, it's three zero two nine Town Line Road and three one one five Town Line Road and private road at Green Acres. So this is a little backwards because they're petitioning for a unlawful tax. So the recommendation is to not approve, but the motion will be to approve.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. So this is a continuation from last year's claim of unlawful tax. So this allows the taxpayer to combine both last year's and this year's together in their court case.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion from Rasmussen, second from Watson to approve. Anyone have any questions on that? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Neal.
Thank you. Well, you know, we've had several discussions on this issue in several months in meetings. I don't really feel that what we have in our packet or before us is a definitive summary of the facts before us. I mean, it's just, you know, staff recommends denial, you know, the committee recommends denial, you know. I've heard things in meetings that would make me lean towards denial. But what we don't have is that executive summary, unless I'm missing it, if I've overlooked it, that just says because of this, 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 and this, we strongly recommend denial of this request. It just simply says denied. Is there anybody here, maybe city attorney, that can give us a quick recap of what our standing is versus the requestor's standing on this issue?
Rick has his whole memo in here. There is an executive summary in here. And that is all the facts. Correct, Rick?
That's correct.
Yes. They've included a parcel they shouldn't have, so the amount is off.
What this does, I mean, and I did read this, it gives a timeline of claims and counterclaims. And we have all the documentation from the requestor. We have responding documentation. We have documentation from members of the, what, the condo owners association? Did they not have a say in this?
Correct. So you're, you could talk about the statute if you want, Rick, about what an unlawful tax is, so.
Right. So there, there's a lot of different things that I guess are in this lawsuit other than this tax claim. So the tax claim is this is one avenue for them to try to ask the council to forgive the tax on those roads that are listed as private. So by statute, because they are private roads, they are taxable until those roads are conveyed to the city of Wausau. And those roads have not been conveyed, so therefore there's an assessment on them. That's about as simple as that I can get, instead of getting into all the other issues that are part of that claim, this is just one aspect that goes along with their claim. And so what, they filed this last year, so they had an unlawful claim last year that was denied. And this unlawful claim will just go with their current court case that they have right now existing.
With their last unlawful claim. It doesn't get rolled into the current lawsuit with them. This is a completely separate and independent tax claim, claiming that we unlawfully taxed them because the roads are not private. That's the basis.
Right. Could I just follow up and ask, what is the vehicle of conveyance to the city that has or has not occurred?
Sure. The, a deed, you know, so the city of Wausau would have to take ownership of those roads. And in doing so, they would have to make sure that the roads meet the, the current legal requirements for a road. And that hasn't happened.
So, Mr. Neal, I think what I hear you saying is you'd like a closed session update on what is, where are we at with that potential lawsuit?
That might be proper as far as I'm concerned. I might be the only one here who kind of feels like, you know, there's, I, I read, you know, communications in here from the requestor's, you know, council. And they're very adamant about what they say, you know. And I'd lean towards denial, of course, because there are certain things that we've heard about, like golf carts on the street where, you know, that's not allowed or, you know, are their properties' standards around the street follow city standards. If they don't, they don't. But I'm not going to move to table this unless somebody else wants to. I just wish it was a little clearer and more definitive than it seems.
Mr. Neal, we've planned, I'm planning to bring an update on this in a closed session discussion on May 27th because the attorneys are unavailable for one on the, on May 13th. So that's already in the works.
So we should not be voting to accept or deny the claim?
Oh, no, you can do this. It stands completely separate from the other lawsuit. This is a completely separate statutory claim. It has nothing to do with the other lawsuit. Completely separate, independent claim.
Correct.
Yep.
By, by allowing the claim, you're basically saying that those roads should not be taxed. And you're forgiving the tax, you're, you're paying the county, the technical colleges, Wausau School District, and the city's portion back to the taxpayer.
Then what are we discussing at this closed session you're talking about?
The current litigation. That's in effect.
Okay.
Where they're suing us to take the roads.
We would just be now staking, staking a position that would be, you know, settled by council that would be part of that litigation. Because they are interrelated, aren't they?
No, I don't think they are. They involve the roads, but they're two completely different statutes, different actions. This is independent. It's just, like he said, it's a tax statute. They're saying you unlawfully imposed a tax on us. And he's saying, no, I haven't because they're, they're private roads today. On January 1st, they were private roads. And so we have to assess them. So we've taxed them. It's not unlawful. If it were like a palpable error or an omission or a mistake of some sort, then the assessor would research that and correct it. But he's telling you on, as of one, one, they were, well, most of these parcels, they don't even have the right parcels in here, but that they were private, which is factual.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. It seems like when we get these, we always have some struggles with, you know, what to do or not do, but this really is one step in a defined process. And the guidance that we always received in the Finance Committee was that the recommendation, unless a mistake was made on the assessment, and the recommendation is always to deny because that opens up additional options for the property owner to continue to pursue their case other ways, right? I mean, that's.
That's correct.
And so only a couple times can I remember that we've granted one of these. And one was on a house and one was on a business. And it turned out that after the fact, we found out that we were wrong both times because there was not a mistake made. And then we gave tax back to those folks who shouldn't have had it, which creates a negative precedent really. So if our staff has verified that the tax status of that property was taxable at the, on the cutoff date, and he's accurately applied the statute, I feel like we have to back that up. So that's where the denial recommendation comes from. And, you know, we shouldn't be undermining that work because it's done by, it's governed by statute. It's not a matter of opinion. So I feel like we have to deny this and that opens up extra options for that owner. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to double-check then. If we wish to deny, then we vote no. Correct?
That's correct.
For this? Thank you.
Correct. And the recommendation is the no vote. Seeing nothing further, you may.
You may begin voting. Motion fails zero to ten.
Thank you. Next up is file number two four dash one one zero nine D. It's a finance resolution adopting the 2025 budget modification for purchase of Axon AI Redaction Assistant Tool. Has an add-on to the police department's existing Axon Enterprise Services Contract that was approved at Finance four to zero. A motion from Watson, second from Rasmussen. Seeing no questions.
You may begin voting. Motion passes two to zero. Ten to zero. Excuse me.
Next up is file two fours dash one one zero nine E. It's a finance resolution adopting 2025 budget modifications for Fourth of July fireworks Motion from Watson, second from Martins. No question. Oh, we have Martin, Mr. Martins.
Thank you. I just want to kind of clarify this. This item came to the Room Tax Commission last fall. The Wausau Area Events asked for, I believe it was fifteen, I'm trying to get the number here, fifteen thousand dollars for, there was a ten thousand dollars. They asked for some money for fireworks, for the Fourth of July Independence Day fireworks display. The Room Tax Commission cannot, can only grant money for marketing expenses, like advertising and things like that, but they can't fund the display itself. So the commission granted the marketing aspect of their event funds. And then that left, which was approximately five thousand dollars. And then the other five thousand dollars would be for the fireworks display itself and that is going to be coming out of tourism and promotion. So that's, that's a separate, that's a separate line item. That's not part of the, the marketing portion of what the room, of what room tax funding can do. So, so this is, this will help offset the costs of the fireworks display that's come this Fourth of July.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Seeing no further questions.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
Next file two four dash one one zero nine Foxtrot. It's a finance resolution adopting 2025 budget modifications for public safety chiller replacement. I understand we're sweating down at the P D. Motion from Lukens, second from Tierney. No explanation needed.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
Up next, file two four dash one one zero nine G. It's finance resolution adopting 2025 budget modification for the purchase of two paratransit vans, one paratransit shuttle bus, and two non-revenue vehicles with CARES funds. And this was approved in Finance four to zero. Motion from Rasmussen, second from Watson. No explanations.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
Up next, file two four dash one one zero nine H. It's a finance resolution approving the allocation of six hundred thousand dollars of 2024 C proceeds to, to fund water portion of the DOT six nine 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 dash zero nine dash seven two Stewart Avenue, South Seventy Second Avenue to South Forty Eighth Avenue. That was approved four to zero in Finance. Motion is from Lukens, second from Watson. No questions.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
All right, up next is file two five dash zero four three one. It's an H R resolution approving the hiring of part-time officers. This was approved three to two in H R. We have a motion from Mr. Neal, second from Tierney. We see need discussion, no discussion.
You may begin voting. Motion passes eight to two.
Up, we're up next is suspension of the rules. We're going to potentially suspend Rule 6B filing and/or 12A referral of resolutions requires two-thirds vote. Motion from Lukens, second from Watson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
All right, first up then is, in that section is, is file two five dash zero four twenty two eight. It's a council resolution approving access agreement with Wausau Chemical Corporation for access to city property at two zero zero one North River Drive. And that's the old Wausau Chemical building. Motion is from Watson, second from Rasmussen. Pretty straightforward.
You may begin voting. You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
And the last item is a resolution to file two five dash zero four two six. It's a joint resolution from infrastructure and plan, resolution accepting dedication of right-of-way at 700 Grand Avenue. That was four to zero at INF, and it passed tonight unanimously, five to zero, six to zero at, at Plant Commission. Motion is from Watson, second from Rasmussen. And seeing no questions.
You may begin voting. Motion passes eight to two.
Oh, we're under two hours tonight. We have public comment and suggestions for the end. Any takers tonight? Please state your name.
Tom Killian, 133 East Thomas Street. I just wanted to touch on something that was invoked tonight and has been in the past and in the press as well. It is a legal quote-unquote precedent for staying beyond one's term. And I wanted to speak to that a little bit because I don't think a lot of the community is even aware of what quote-unquote precedent is being invoked. And if I'm not mistaken, that would be the Prain precedent, Dr. Prain, when he would not get out of his seat on the DNR. And there are a few things I'd like to say about that. First of all, it would be hard to overstate the potential damage that his remaining on the board during that period did for our state and its policies. In fact, some may argue that, that baloney of staying on the board allowed to vote down contaminant limits on some very harmful contaminants along with other things. But the reason I bring that up, other than the community's probably not aware of what's being leaned on now, is that in the partisan hellscape that we find ourselves in as a society, rarely are there such clear and coachable moments where the absurdity and hypocrisy of something is laid so bare. And now, some so-called liberals call this a quote-unquote precedent. But let me remind our people that when a so-called conservative judge had heralded that decision, a so-called liberal judge had called it quote-unquote absurd. And that so-called liberal judge said this, allowing Prain to continue serving in office indefinitely makes him the final authority on whether he remains in office. Not the legislature, which specified by statute that his term expired over 13 months ago, and not the governor, who the legislature gave the authority to nominate a replacement. One unelected official should not be able to dictate his term in office over the will of the people's elected representatives. Now, the Wisconsin Democracy Campaign in their piece stated, this is yet another example of Republicans trashing the norms of our democracy. Well, to some self-proclaimed liberals and self-proclaimed Democrats, I would say, welcome to the trash can, right? Because that is why many Wausonians, Wisconsinites, and Americans trust nothing related to partisan government in this country. And we live in a time where on the two different sides, they won't even shake hands or eat lunch together, but apparently they're cozy as two peas in a pod in the ideological garbage can, because this is the same playbook that was used before. It was wrong then. It's wrong now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ooh, I see someone approaching.
Good evening. Matt Barnes, Chief of Police, City of Wausa. I just want to take this opportunity to share my appreciation for the staff of the Police Department, Tracy Gerante being one of them. In a period of three weeks, we were able to go from, what are we going to do for shelter, to we're opening Thursday. And trying to cram everything in, we have a planning commission vote that takes place Thursday about an hour and a half before we actually open the doors. This has required multiple departments within the city working together. And as, it's important to me that you guys understand how much work went into that, how committed those individuals are, and the fact that we're opening Thursday and we'll be able to provide shelter for 60 individuals. The basement at the First United Methodist Church is all set up right now. Additionally, I want to take this opportunity publicly to thank, and I will miss some, so we'll do, we'll do this multiple times. But when we asked the community for volunteers, they showed up. When we asked people to come work for us, knowing that I'm going to fire them on December 31st, we got more applications than we have positions for. When we needed a washer and dryer, the Grebees family gave us a washer and dryer and delivered it. When we need a refrigerator or freezer, Furniture and Appliance Marge showed up and said, which one do you want? And so those things are all installed right now. And not to my surprise, but we're ready to go. And everything's not perfect, but I feel confident that we will have a safe place for up to 60 individuals starting Thursday. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are you, are those jazz hands, or do you have a question?
No, they're hands that say, can I talk to you a minute?
Certainly.
Okay. I appreciate your humility. I realize the amount, you and I don't agree on some things, Chief Barnes.
Couple things.
But I do realize the amount of work that you have put into this. And somebody said to me the other day, this shouldn't be in the hands of the police chief, the, the homeless situation. And I said, do you know anyone else right now who would be doing this and handling this exorbitant amount of work? So I do want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief was one of the, we were at the, at the Joint Finance Committee today, and that was, there were 300-plus people in a room doing this, silently clapping. So that's a thing, I guess. All right. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion from Neal, second from Martins. All in favor?
Aye.
Have good evening.
I did. Second by Martins.
You said you did, or?
I did.